This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
So, uh, here we are again.[20.02][20.02](laughing) Seems like it was just yesterday.[24.34][24.34](laughing) So, tonight, we're going to be reviewing the 2008 through 2022 proposed capital improvement program, and you all should have received a paper copy last night. Hopefully, you've had a... We did distribute the electronic version on Friday, but hopefully, you've had a chance to look through it. A little bit different format this year. If you... If you like it, all the credit goes to Josh and Christine, if you don't blame me, please.[55.12][55.12](laughing)
Do you like it?[57.12][57.12](laughing)
It's actually a lot... It's a lot less work for us to put it together because pretty much all the pages in here are generated from the software application as opposed to... We were doing a big Word document before, so it was probably a little bit less work on the back end for us at least, maybe a little bit more work on the front end, but I think it came out... Came out real well. So, uh, we'll spend a little bit of time running through the, um, the capital program itself, kind of a high-level overview about, um, how it... How the CIP relates to the guiding principles we talked about at our initial work session, and then how this CIP complies with the city council's, um, debt priorities as well as your fund balance prior... Policies. And then we'll do a little segue, and Dale will talk about, um, the Transit Transfer Center and give an update to the city council on that project. And then if we have time after that, we'll move into, um, specific funds and projects within the... Within the CIP, but we'll hope to have things wrapped up by 6:30 or so and catch the remainder of the items at the next work session. So, um, just a little follow-up from the... From the CIP planning meeting that we had with the, um, with the council a few weeks back. We did, based upon feedback from council, we did go ahead and add language into our into our guiding principles having to do with poverty and benefit to lower moderate income persons. So, you'll see that in just a second when we get to those guiding principles. There was a discussion at the CIP planning meeting about bus shelters, and there are bus shelters proposed in 2018. Twenty-two bus shelters are included for 2018. And we also had some discussion towards the end of that meeting about special assessments and whether or not, um, we wanted to continue with our program of assessing abutting properties owners for, uh, for street improvements. And we had some discussion internally about this. It's really not ready for inclusion in the CIP at this point. We would need to make changes to the city council's special assessment policy and... In order to effectuate that, because that's where all the special assessments are prescribed, and staff will be putting together a separate report on what we would need to do in order to accomplish that, as well as the financial impact to the, you know, to the community if we were to eliminate the special assessment policy and any other pros or cons associated with doing that. So, just wanted to give that follow-up related to the... Related to the planning meeting.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Are we going to have a work session or some sort of a focus session about that issue and different options that we might look at? Because I think that'd be helpful to the council to collaborate around what are the communities they're doing, what could work, what couldn't work.
So, our thought on that was to first put together just some staff background and send that to the council and let them digest that, and then we can decide where we want to go from there.[300.27][300.27](laughing)
So, as far as our... Just for review, our guiding principles in putting together this year's CIP. Resources should be provided for the maintenance of existing infrastructure and facilities, timely replacement of equipment. Resources should be provided for the continued growth of our community. Resources should be provided to enhance the sense of place and community. And then, a new principle that was added based upon feedback, um, from the earlier planning meeting is that resources should be provided which help reduce poverty in our community or which directly benefit persons with low and moderate income. So, those are the... That's kind of the lens that we'll take a look at this, um, at this CIP through.
Are those in here?
Um, they're not in that document. They're not in that document itself, no.
Would it be possible to add them to this document?
Yep, absolutely.
Even in your new software?
Yep, 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 yep. Not a problem.
It makes it a little more comprehensive.
We can...
Yeah, so what we can do is, yeah, we bring that back tonight, um, I guess for feedback, and then when we... When we bring forward the actual final CIP that you'll adopt, we can...
Put it in there. Put it in there.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, I presume council agrees with all, maybe they don't.[388.22][388.22](laughing)
Um, so, we're gonna... Now, I want to talk a little bit about the CIP and how this CIP relates to those guiding principles. So, the first guiding principle, and we've talked about this... Talked about this last year as well, is that resources should be provided for the maintenance of existing infrastructure, facilities, and timely replacement of equipment. So, if we look at our entire CIP, all of the funds in all of the years, the maintenance and replacement of infrastructure and equipment comprise about 76% of the expenditures in the CIP. New stuff comprises... Projects that are new or created... Create new infrastructure or facilities comprise about 24% in the CIP. If we just look at the general fund, it's... Actually, the percentages are almost identical, with maintenance and replacement at about 76% and new, uh, new things at about, uh, about 24%. So, that's pretty consistent across... Across all of the funds. Some years are higher and lower in those percentages, but overall, this is what the CIP represents. You know, some of the... Some of the, you know, larger projects that we have in, I guess that category of new items include a transit transfer center, includes the, um, the underpass of Dewey Street for the... For the bike trail. It includes the quiet zone improvements along Galloway Street, pedestrian bridge. So, those are some of the... Some of the big, kind of, new things. Not new projects, but things that are... Create some new infrastructure within our community. Oh, in addition, is the development of the park in the cannery redevelopment area. So, those are... Those are some of the big projects that are... That comprise that new category. Second principle we talked about is resources should be provided for the continued growth of our community. Some of the projects that fall within that category include our water basin modifications, which are included in some of the future years within the water fund. Certainly, clean water and the ability to provide that, uh, an abundant supply of clean water to our community is one of our high priorities, and that, you know, again, the ability to provide that water allows our community to grow, both in terms of water service for fire protection and industry, as well as residential growth. Chippewa... We've talked in the past about a new crossing of the Chippewa River for water service. We only have a single... A single crossing on the north side of the community across the Chippewa River. This would create a second redundant crossing, providing more reliable service across the... In the northwest part of our community. The Jeffers Road area storm sewer provides storm sewer service and relief in the... In that north central, north northwest part of the... Part of the community. Funding's provided for the build-out of... Or continued build-out of Gateway Business Park within TID number nine. And lastly, um, funds are provided for park development and trail development within the cannery redevelopment area. So, all of these things, all of these projects are contributing to the... To the long-term growth of our community, not to mention our normal citywide maintenance programs for streets and water and sewer and storm sewer utilities within Eau Claire. Third principle is that resources should be provided to enhance the sense of place and community. I think that the CIP has an abundant number of projects that... That fall into this... Into this category. I mentioned the cannery park development. We've got continued trail development throughout the city, as well as an underpass of the pedestrian trail under Dewey Street. We've got the Phoenix Park pedestrian bridge, development of Haymarket Plaza, various improvements to Hobbs Ice Center. We've talked about an addition, a small addition to that facility to potentially attract a junior hockey team, but there are a number of other maintenance projects, such as the replacement of the, um, ice sheet at one of the rinks that are necessary to continue to have that facility be a... Be a first-class facility. Somewhat new this year, some of you may have noticed that there are library and projects included in the CIP. This is the first year that we've included the... Included the library in the CIP. But certainly, the improvements to the... In the library, to the library that are contained within this... This program continue... Contribute to enhancing the sense of place and community. And lastly, a new restroom and pavilion is proposed in Owen Park. So, again, these are just examples, but there are many other projects within... Within the CIP that would fall into this category. These are just some of the... Some of the examples. And lastly, resources should be provided which help reduce poverty in our community or which directly benefit persons with low and moderate income. There are several projects that we believe would fall... Fall into this principle or be consistent with this principle, include the transit transfer center. We'll be talking more about that later this evening. Improvements to the library, the Owen Park restroom and pavilion, bus shelters, cannery park development located within an area of lower incomes, replacement of buses and their impact on our transit service. And while it's not directly in the CIP, the alley replacements are within the CIP. I just wanted to remind you that, you know, a year or so ago, we did implement the alley reimbursement program to reimburse low and moderate income property owners for the special assessments associated with the citywide alley program. So, again, these are just examples of some of the projects within the CIP that we think contribute to this particular guiding principle. So, if we look at our, again, our CIP in total, um, these are how the projects break down by funding source. About... Almost 53% of the projects are what we would consider general fund projects, and we'll go into a little bit more detail about that in a minute. But about 2% of the CIP is our library project. Water projects represent about 19% of this... Of this capital program. Stormwater, about 6%. So, you can see that there are quite a number of different funds represented within this capital... Capital program. One of the other things we talk about is how we're... How we're funding these. And, again, this is across all funds. About 54... 55% of the projects are being funded by the issuance of debt in some form, whether that's promissory notes or... Or bonds. About 50... Nearly 55% are being funded in that way. And about 45, 46% are being funded with cash. And I... I think that that's rather striking, actually. I think that Eau Claire should be very proud of being able to fund 45, 46% of its capital improvements with... With cash, without having to borrow. There are not a lot of communities in this state that are able to say that and able to do that. Levy limits have forced many, if not most, communities to borrow for their capital improvements because they simply have had to remove those expenditures from their... From their operating budgets. But I think that Eau Claire has been able to do a very good job, and it's, again, a tribute to all the staff in this room that were able... You've heard it from me before, that were able to under-expend our operating budgets and over-realize revenue so that we're not drawing down fund balance every year to make these capital... Make these investments in our capital. I think this is something that we should be very proud of. Looking specifically at projects in the general fund, about 56% of the projects within the general fund fall into that category of transportation improvements. So, those are bridges, these are our bike trails, these are our streets, these are our sidewalks. They're all part of that category we're referring to as transportation, allowing people to get from one place to another. About 10% of the expenditures are transit-related, buses, a transit transfer center, bus shelters, a new electronic fare system, things that are all included within that category. About 17% are land buildings and equipment, so park pavilions. This building, we're still, you know, in the middle of renovating this particular building. About 7.5% are parks and rec projects. Now, there are also parks and rec projects that are within... We put in land buildings and equipment. If it's a building, it's a... It's in that category rather than parks and recs. So, like a pavilion will be within land buildings and equipment rather than within parks. So, again, many projects are being funded by the... By the general fund, and they're... They're across many different areas of our... Of our organization.
Jake, can I ask you?
Yeah, absolutely.
What is the going back? What is the total dollar amount there?[1071.16][1071.16](mumbling) Is there a way to see that?
Yeah, yeah. There... I can... I can get it for you as we... I'll get it for you when I turn things over to Dale, because I just have to pull up a spreadsheet and I'll have... And I'll have the dollar number.
Because we won't be listening to Dale, is that what you're saying?
No, I won't be listening to Dale, so...[1093.12][1093.12](laughing)
Except I'll be using your...
Yeah, oh, that's right. You'll be using my computer.
That's right.
So, if we look, again, just at the general fund projects, a little bit different than across the entire CIP, about 74% of the general fund projects are being funded by the issuance of debt, either promissory notes, general obligation bonds. About 36% are being paid for with... With cash. I still think that that is somewhat unique within the state, that we're able to fund that amount of our CIP through... With cash that's on hand. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but that will be somewhere between $3 and $4 million that we're able to fund with... With cash on hand. So, the way the process has worked is division and department submitted requests. We've gone through those requests, we've met with division and departments, and not everything made the cut, so to speak. We had to make some hard choices, and when we get into the... Into your financial policies a little bit, you'll see why we had to make some of those choices. But I just wanted to run... Run through to give you some sense, and this is... This list is not by any means exhaustive, but just give you a sense of some of the choices that we made in putting the CIP together. Citywide street and sidewalk improvements. We reduced, from the request that was made, we reduced it by about $2 million throughout the five years of this CIP. Now, if we look back at the last CIP, the 2017, it's a reduction of about $750,000. But that was a choice we had to make in... In putting this CIP together. Fire station building improvements, not the new fire station, but these are miscellaneous improvements to our existing or other fire stations. That request was reduced by about $1.3 million over the five years of this CIP. Now, it's still a million-dollar increase from the... From the CIP we adopted a year ago, but nevertheless, the request had to be... Had to be reduced. We had to take a look at the replacement of fire equipment, and we ended up deferring the replacement of one fire pumper truck that was requested beyond the end of this CIP. The end of the CIP, so that will likely occur in 2023, but nevertheless, needed to be pushed out. Funding for the replacement of three buses, we're going to handle those a little bit... We're proposing to handle those a little bit differently in that the funding for the local share of those buses is not included in this CIP, but when we apply for the grants, we'll have the city council express your intent to appropriate those funds if we receive those grants. So, if we receive them, there'll be an opportunity to replace those buses at some point in the future as well.
You had to explain, though, that the buses are still...
Right.
The ones we expect...
Right, the ones we expect to get from the state are still in there. These would be ones where we'll be applying to the feds, to the federal government directly, much more competitive grants. We're much less likely to get... To get funding, but if we do, then we'll... We'll have the council appropriate funds for those... For those buses. New bleachers for the Carson Football Field were requested. That had to be removed from the CIP. And then, lastly, funding for public space cameras, that request was reduced by nearly $100,000 over the five years of the CIP, but it's still an increase from the 2017 through 2021 CIP. So, I just wanted to give you a sense of some of the things that... Some of the choices that... That we needed to make in putting together... In putting together this CIP. Oh, two more, two more. Go ahead.
Public space cameras?
Yes.
Is that $81,000? Is that... When did we start that program? Is that the big... Is this the big deal?
Oh, no, no. This program's been around longer than I've been here. When did... Chief, do you know when we started with public space cameras? Kelly might know.
I think in 2011.
2011?
Five.
Yeah.
And we have a little logo?
They're growing.
They're growing, yeah. There's...
They... Particularly with a lot of our projects, they just come with the project, so like the new ramp, you know? So, you think of here's the new ramp, and part of building the new ramp is the security of it. That's considered a public space camera. So, when we add them in at Carson Park, or we put them in... When we redo an intersection, you know, we're putting them in the intersections, not only for the traffic control, but, you know, just to be able to do...
Accident reconstruction.
Accident reconstruction and things like that. So, just more and more, when we do a project in a public space, we find that there's a request, a need, an interest, you know, to put cameras, you know, with that, especially since we put the time and effort into the infrastructure with our fiber. You know, we have fiber to so many other places in the community. You know, when the opportunity comes to put the camera, which helps with our operations, you know, we do that, but we can't... We can't do them all.
What are the implications for our streets for reducing that amount? You reduced what the city engineer asked for? Or... So... So, should... What are the consequences of that?
Well, certainly, fewer streets will... Fewer streets, miles of streets will... Will end up being able to be resurfaced in any given year. It's about $400,000 per year that we had to... We had to reduce that. Now, you know, I don't know off the top of my head, and Dave might be able to answer, but, you know, whether or not that will specifically have a... Or have a direct impact on our Pacer ratings or not, you know, I'm not really sure.
How many miles, another brew, and five mile... How many... How much less mileage a street can we replace?
Dave?
Well, a good example of, like, a Grand Avenue or Dixon Street in downtown areas, about $300,000, $300,000 to $400,000 per block in downtown. If you get in over residential, like a Fillmore Avenue or a Fillmore Street or Hamilton Avenue, that drops about half of that. What we look at, we have some work with Steve Potten. If we have a project, like, we recently redid Golf Road, we did mill and overlay in Golf Road. We replaced the curb and gutter, was starting to deteriorate at the joints. So, instead of replacing the curb and gutter with the mill and overlay, we may have some additional maintenance requests to keep the curb and gutter together. And then, in 10, 13 years, once we do a full payment replacement, he says, "No, overlay now." We'll do everything at that point instead of coming in and using the curb to replace it. So, it'll ops some maintenance, therefore, roads and road management, that you replace the new road with additional maintenance.
So, one of the consequences is that the maintenance budget will go up or the capital budget goes down?
So, we will be... We'll have to be... Play the best value for that.
And then, we have some goals for, I mean, all the streets and then all the arterials, and we have some goals for improving the pavement to the city.
I will say, our street... Our pavement conditions are very good for the City of Eau Claire. There's only three that are in the poor category, 3%, and I believe it was about 11% that are in the fair to poor category, the bottom two categories, more than. So, we're in pretty good shape. Part of that involves chip seals. When we chip seal a street, it jumps that condition up a lot higher than... Than it maybe should, but we have pretty... We have pretty good street pavement condition right now that we're able to maintain and keep up with. The one thing that we've concentrated on is with the water main program, replacing some of the older water mains, and then the streets that go along with that, that we'll have to be... Pay special attention to get the best value of the streets for it.
Will this cause us significant problems in the future with much greater costs? And I'm not talking about inflated costs, but by deferring these projects, are we causing our budget to go up significantly in the future?
I don't think we will.
The challenge is, of course, if you recall, this is over two years ago, we put the fiscal policies in place that are the boundaries, you know, to... What we want to be able to do, to be fiscally responsible with debt going forward. You look at this graph and you see that, you know, transportation is 56%. You know, and the unfortunate part is that when you look at between levy limits and also debt that had been issued, you know, previously, our capacity to borrow is shrinking if we stay within our policy limits. And in order to make the choices for these capital, you know, projects, when you already have over 50% of the projects in the transportation arena, if we... As we, you know, scale back on these, you know, part of that has to also come from transportation, in addition to all the other areas that you find out.
And just put it in a little bit... A little bit, a perspective of actual dollar amounts. By the time we get out, and again, lots of projections in here, but by the time we get out to 2022 in this CIP, we're only able to borrow a little bit over $7 million a year, and the streets program comprises $5 to $6 million of that.
Of that seven of our capacity.
Are we then putting an emphasis, like, okay, a good example is Dewey Street Underpass. I'm not arguing the validity, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. What I'm talking about is the significant cost of it. Are we looking at ways to get additional funding? Same thing with the pedestrian bridge that comes across with Phoenix Park?
Both of those issues are not in the general fund, you know, borrowing. They would be with the TIF, and they would be... They would be paid for by the incremental increments of the development that would come associated with them.
So, that's still... I mean, I understand it's coming... So that's still, I mean, I understand it's coming out of the TIF, but that's still tax dollars that we're not receiving because the TIFs aren't closing as fast.
So.
So are we emphasizing getting private-public partnership us to help us with these projects? Like for our trails, we get monies?
So I can, I can tell you that for the bridge in particular, there's some very active conversations right now with some partners in the community, and we're putting together a coalition, and we're hopeful to bring back a substantial donation for that bridge coming forward.
Okay, well, that's, that's a key thing, because what I'm hearing from a lot of people in the public, there's certain projects that, it isn't that they aren't good projects, it's that they feel there should be some contribution by some of the individuals that are getting more of a benefit than other individuals in the community.
So those are, those are active discussions, and yes, we do seek partnerships and collaboration with other people and organizations that can contribute to capital projects.
We've worked really hard to get our roads into, to pretty good condition. Is, is, I guess, how, my thing is, how is this going to affect the condition of the roads over the next five years? What's it going to take that percentage from, you know? And, and, and what are we spending that four hundred thousand on? Do we know what we're, just?
Well, in, or the last few years, we have, we had a number of very costly projects with Brackett Avenue and Markstow Street and Grand Avenue. Those are a lot more costly per foot than we have in the residential neighborhoods. So we'll start working our way out of downtown as well. So, you know, block downtown is a lot of cost that would have blocked in the third order of height. So that's why I'm not, I mean, we watch these, it's, it's almost like a competition to make sure that we're keeping those numbers up, that we're not sliding, and we watch that. And if we watch it, then we'll, we'll have to, you know, make adjustments accordingly per request.
Okay, good.
What about the idea of vehicle registration fees? Which, I think it was eight years ago, we considered, it was going to potentially four hundred and fifteen thousand, on ten dollars per vehicle. That's a maybe to a way to help fund some of those.
It, it, it is, and a vehicle registration fee is one of the few alternate revenue sources that, that's, that's available. I was in Janesville, which was one of the few cities that had a vehicle registration fee several years ago. A number of communities have added it since then. I will tell you that it is an extremely unpopular and extremely regressive form of, form of taxation. So, you know, if, if, certainly if we want to go down that path, you know, that's certainly a policy decision, you know, for the city council, and we can prepare, prepare the information. But I just throw that out there for whatever it's, for whatever it's worth, that, that my experience was it would really, in fact, the city council tried to rescind it a year after they, a year after they adopted it, it was so unpopular.
The other thing to perhaps monitor on this situation going forward is what's happening at the state level. And there's, there's conversations, obviously very serious conversations at the state level concerning transportation funding at all levels. And to the extent that, that the state is able to, I'll say, solve that problem at the state level, some of that will, will assist us. I mean, if they're able to solve it for the state roads, you know, they, they recognize that, that, you know, roads are an important issue at all levels, including, you know, the municipality. So we don't know where that's going to end up. And obviously, there's a lot of conversation about that, and what the right solution is to make that sustainable, you know, going forward, because it's really not the way it's structured right now. And if they are, will come up with a sustainable solution, you know, we would probably benefit from that in some way. How much? I don't know, but, you know, to some degree, we would.
A couple other items we weren't able to include. We had a request for a salt brine production system. The county has a salt brine production system. We use salt brine to, to, for ice control during the winter months. We will, actually, the, the request spawned an additional conversation between, between the county administrator and the city manager to work more closely.
This is an example of where, you know, we can say, are there other ways of, of working through the salt brine? Needs of both organizations. So if we do engage in those conversations, then we can.
Right, so that, so, you know, we're, we're working through that with, with the county to, to better meet, to better meet our needs in that intergovernmental partnership. And lastly, there was a, a piece of equipment for lawn and snow, lawn mowing, snow removal around this building that didn't make the cut. So if we take a look at council's, turn our attention to council's debt policies. One of the, one of the criteria that we, or one of the policies requires that indebtedness shall not exceed three and a half percent of equalized value of taxable property in the community. Remember, the state limit is five percent of equalized value, but the city council has a policy of three and a half percent of equalized value. So the red line here, the red area represents the state limit. The green, anything below the green area here represents the limit by council policy. And the blue area here represents the net general obligation debt with the projects that are included in the funding that's included in this, this capital program. So you can see, actually, our, our, our net GO debt is going to peak around twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen under this CIP, and will actually start to decline a little bit over the out years of this capital, of this capital program. Councilmember Beatty?
Well, I was just wondering if it's common for municipalities to have a, a local limit that's lower than the state limit?
It's not uncommon. There are many communities that don't want to push that, that state limit, but feel that that's a little bit too high. So it's, it's not uncommon for communities to have something that's a little bit, a little bit lower than that.
The main, the main reason those limits were put in and are adopted by the councils a few years back, one was to put an emphasis on controlling the amount of debt that we're borrowing. The second is to make sure we don't lose our bond ratings. Because if we continue, if we would go up to the two hundred thousand in borrowing, that would increase taxes significantly to the residents.
Yeah, I, I generally understand why we do that, and we've seen this a bunch of times. But I just, it's very, 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 very.
Yeah, it's, it, the community I came from had a similar, very similar policy. So it's not, not unusual. Net direct debt shall not exceed three times the operating revenues of the city. Anything under the red area represents three times our operating revenue. Green area represents our net direct debt, so we're well, well underneath this particular measure. Levy for debt service shall be no greater than twenty-five percent of the total property tax levy. As we talked about before, and I indicated, this is, this is the limiting, this is the limiting factor for, at least right now, for our capital, capital program. So what, what we have done, the green line here represents twenty-five percent of our total tax levy. The blue line that, that ends right here represents what our current debt service is. And then the red line represents what our debt service will be with the, with this capital program. And what we've done is, is, is basically decrease the rate of increase so that these lines are, when we get out to about twenty twenty-one, are really now running parallel to each other. So our debt service is, is basically increasing at the same rate as our, as our tax levy at that point. It's not, we're not running the trend so that we're going to run straight into that line. We're running it so that we're, it's, the rate of increase is decreasing, so we're going to run up and go par- parallel to it, and not get right up, right up to it so that there's at least some room for annual, annual fluctuations.
Jay, when you went up in those future years, did you adjust interest rates up on the debt?
Yes, yes.
Without them saying, they were, there, there will be, well, nobody knows exactly what the increases will be, but our interest rates will be going up in the future years because they've been increasing in the last couple.
Yeah, I think either up to four, four and a half percent in the, in the out years on, on tax exempt debt, so.
Okay.
Which.
Yeah, it's conservative.
That's conservative, yeah.
If it's less than that, then it helps the graph in future years.
So yes, those, those, I didn't, didn't assume artificially low, artificially low rates, but, you know, they've been low for like six years now.
Yeah, I know.
But, but they will go up, they're, I, at some point. So yes, that is, that's assumed in there. So this CIP adds an average over four hundred and twelve thousand dollars in debt service per year. The owner of a property valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would pay an additional fourteen dollars per year in, in property taxes. As we've shown in the graphs, the total general obligation debt increases early, but then decreases, and actually remains roughly equal to the twenty sixteen debt, total debt at about a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. Now, one of the things you might ask is, Jay, you showed us a, a chart that, that our, our, our net debt was going down, but our debt service is continuing to go up. Reason that's happening is we're not retiring very much debt. The way our debt ser- our debt service was structured is we've only got between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars in debt service coming off of our books each year. Well, that doesn't allow us to issue a lot of new debt. So even though our total debt is coming down, our debt service payments are continuing to go up because we're not retiring all that much debt.
Haven't we changed our policy on that now, issuing shorter term?
We're try, we're, we're trying to, trying to keep our average, you know, under, maturity under ten years. But, you know, again, it's a, it's a challenge to do and to continue to, to finance, finance the projects that we have. Also, council has a fund balance policy, indicates unassigned fund balance shall be maintained at a minimum of fifteen percent of the ensuing year's general fund expenditures with a goal of twenty percent. So there's kind of a range there, fifteen to twenty percent, we want to be in that range. Funds in excess of fifteen percent may be used to supplement pay-as-you-go capital outlay expenditures. So we don't use it for operations, we use it for one-time capital outlay expenditures. This CIP assumes that we're using about three point three seven million dollars per year of fund balance to fund capital projects. Now, we're not going to draw down fund balance by three point three seven million dollars per year, but that's how much cash basically we're using. But we are projecting that we will be drawing down unassigned fund balance by about one point one million dollars per year. Now, what does that look like? Well, as you can see, right here in twenty sixteen, this green area represents fifteen to twenty percent of our, of, of our fund balance, or, excuse me, of our, of our expenditures. And these, as you can see in twenty sixteen, we're, we're well above that. In fact, we're above thirty percent. Well, we are gonna, we are projecting or planning through this CIP to gradually draw down the fund balance. And in twenty twenty-two, the last year of this CIP, we'll be sitting at a nearly eighteen percent, seventeen point eight eight percent. So we'll still be well within the range that we plan to, that we plan to be in, but we are planning for a gradual drawdown of the CIP to get it back down into that range and to, to be able to fund projects with cash rather than, rather than borrowing for them. So I wanted to show you that we are, we are planning to stay in compliance with that policy, but are projecting a drawdown of fund balance. So in terms of next steps, we've got another council work session scheduled for May thirtieth. That's next week. This will be going to Plan Commission for their review on June nineteenth. June twenty-first, we'll be going to Transit Commission for their review. June twenty-eighth, we'll be going to Parks and Waterways for their review. July eleventh, it will be coming back to the city council for action on the CIP, hopefully approval or adoption at that time. And then remember, in November, the two thousand and eighteen projects will come back to the city council for appropriation as part of our, as part of our program services or, or annual budget. So the, the funding will actually be appropriated at that time for the twenty seventeen, or twenty eighteen projects. Questions about the CIP before I turn it over to Dale?
Done?
Well, it's, it's eleven and a half million dollars more than last year. And is that the, the transfer center and what?
Can, can, canary, canary, canary improvement was what? Yeah, that's three point, three point eight for that. That was, that was a, was a big piece.
And then this link.
I'm sorry, I had to step out, I had a, something down the wrong pipe, so I apologize if you've covered this already. Regarding the additional lens for the guiding principle regarding poverty and to benefit people who are experiencing low to moderate income, how do you see that lens being used?
Sure, well.
I, I did see some of the items.
Yeah, well, you know, we, I think that what we try, what we, I tried to do here is, I guess, highlight some of the, some of the projects that I think fit within that, that guiding principle that are included within, within this, this capital program. And, you know, these are, I think, all, all items that, you know, they're, they're, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue that they're seeking to reduce poverty within our community, but I think that they do provide a direct benefit to lower moderate income persons in terms of providing improvements to our transit system as well as city facilities that, that, you know, many persons that are lower moderate income take adva- take advantage of.
And if I can ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Do you think that there is a, the city would have sought all of these things anyway? And now we can put them under this lens?
I think that, I think all, all of these projects were, were requested by division or department heads. I think probably all of those requests were actually in before this, this principle was, was, was added at the, at the work session. But I, again, you know, at this point, I wanted to highlight that those are things that I think are consistent, consistent with that.
I know that in the past, the bus shelters are, it's been pushed out into the future. Glad to see you back.
Right, and it, and it is there. With that being said, I, I mean, I, I want, I want to make sure everyone understands that the way it's structured right now is, is, are the bus shelters do have an eighty percent federal component to them. So, you know, if, if we don't receive the federal funding, then.
What's the, what's the prognosis on the, because the whole transfer center and all of that's the eighty percent?
Dale will cover that.
We can talk about that in just a minute.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And this is related to the armored vehicle purchase and sort of how funds were used for re-admission. What do you, how did that work in terms of where the seventy thousand was going to use? And how, what was prioritized less in order to make that doable for armored vehicle?
There was actually forty thousand dollars from a previous CIP project that wasn't expended. And so that was the forty thousand dollars that was used. The additional thirty thousand was actually the labor that was charged internally to install those, those items into the vehicle. So it wasn't really a seventy thousand dollar expenditure total. It was more or less a, a transfer of thirty thousand dollars within city departments to cover that labor cost.
Okay, and then forty thousand left over CIP?
Right, that's correct, from previous years, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask just one more question on this guiding principle? So trying to think back to why I would be interested in that is, you know, our community has taken a very forward-looking approach on how we're going to address poverty and trying to get away from, I mean, there's, there's, as we talked about before, all the things we should do and keep maintaining. And then there's the, maybe the new innovative space on how do we start turning a, a deeper.
a deeper corner on reducing poverty. And I'm wondering if there's going to be any room or if there's any more, I mean, guidance from the council or anything just to help turn the corner versus, um, putting items in that lens that would have been addressed anyway, even if that principle wasn't brought to the table.
Well, and I think that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a discussion that I think, you know, council needs to have as far as what those projects might, you know, might be. And, you know, certainly, um, you know, you all have, have an opportunity and can certainly make changes, um, to this CIP. I don't know what those projects might, might be at this, at this point in time. That you're interested in bringing, or that fall into that, into a capital improvement as opposed to something that would be, uh, within the, uh, within the operating budget.
I could offer you, um, the, uh, certainly within the transit project we've been talking about is embedded in that is a Fort Le Houghton. And so to the extent that, um, you know, as part of that project, the, the interest in saying we want Fort Le Houghton and part of that project is in here and, you know, has, has developed. And then also to the extent that, um, you know, the, the TIF policy offers the opportunity to have that as part of the discussion going forward. We haven't had any projects yet to, to run that through. And part of that, I think, might come from the rest of the discussions that are happening. So, um, the, the lens is there and to the extent that, um, you know, that helps us know that that's a lens that you want us to be working through. And as we're going forward and as projects and opportunities come up, um, I think you'll see more of it. But there is, you know, as Jay said, there's, you know, ha- having that lens put out at the, at the pre-meeting coming into this, to say that there was, you know, some new projects that came out solely for that lens, you know, right today, no. But, you know, what we are able to say is that, that there are projects here that do fit that lens. And now that lens is there and heard of, you know, the guiding principles that you want us to have, I think you'll see more of that as we go forward, you know.
I have, I have a question. How do we, maybe a process question, how do we change the, how do we add the guiding principles to the CIP in a, in a work session? And, and maybe not at the full council, although I guess I remember working on the fund balance policy. We did work in work sessions and then we, then it came to council and the full council voted on it. And, and so I, I wonder how we actually change guidelines and principles in, in work sessions.
At this point, um, at the beginning, I, I said I wasn't sure if council was going to adopt the, the guiding principles. Last year and this year, they were presented to us just in a, not just, but they were presented as priorities, they were called. And we reviewed them in a work session and sort of hearing no objection, the, in the work session. The council formed a consensus of that those are priorities. And I don't know that we had articulated priorities before. This year we might be moving to a, a change of wording a little bit of guiding principles, which may be lasting over time and direct our work on a very high policy level. So when we adopt the CIP, the way I would see it, those principles would become part of the document. They could be separated out for discussion or, um, they could be separated out for discussion and adopted duly by resolution.
You know, but at the, at that, at that point in time, it's already, the CIP is already done with using those guiding principles that it's a little, I don't know, to me it seems a little backward, but...
Well, do you have an objection to one of them today or do you have any objection?
I don't remember voting on them, so I don't know, I don't...
Well, I, I think what you're getting into more already than else is if, if we adopt the principles, what are we talking about? A dollar amount? Because we only, we have limited dollars in the budget.
I don't think they were attached to dollars.
I understand that, but I think that's the point.
It's very high.
Until we get to that point, we really don't know what the impact is.
Oh, that's not, that's not, I thought it was still pick up a surplus of a guiding.
I would, I would say that sequentially, I, I, I don't know, it can't be found enough of Dave, of course, but I think sequentially, sometimes it feels like to me that staff puts together the budget and then I think we have made leaps and bounds with improvement, having discussions earlier versus first thing last week's in October. But it still feels like staff puts together the budget and then we can have some say-so and then everything kind of stays the same or very similar. And I feel like maybe we would have a greater sense, I'll speak for myself, um, a greater sense of agency and feeling like, okay, I'm part of that setting those parameters, agree or disagree at the beginning and then do the budget. So I think just sequencing, I think for me that would be helpful.
I believe we're working in that direction. It's as I recall, the first time last year, we even had some articulated priorities other than what's in our strategic plan, which is referenced also in this document. But I, at our next work session, it might not be perfect. We could certainly review if those principles are consistent with how we, um, how we see our city, how we want to use our CIP, I guess. How we, do we want to build new stuff or take care of what we have? Do we want to grow or adopt it? So it's a very high-level statement of a general value system that we have as a council, as a, as elected. We could certainly carve out time to discuss them as, as a principle.
I just think we're...
Moving into the direction, we're getting better each year.
I agree with it.
Whereas in circles, um, I, this was April twenty-fourth. There were three priorities mentioned, which turned out to be the guiding principles.
Yes.
And when we expanded about Park, and we, we seemed to agree and nobody said, no, I want to go around it, I want to do something. So I said they were settled. So I guess...
I guess, I mean, for me, I just as an elective, if we're given, if we're giving direction and, and we're changing things, it just seems to me like we should be on record. I don't know.
When I, I think on page five, that maybe I can, I always can learn more every day. But on page five, it seems like the requests are already in before we work on the priorities and parameters.
That's true, Kathy, but we are moving in the right direction. We are moving in a, in a direction that we, we set up, we set guidance and then the CIP is built off that guidance. Kathy's right, those pri- those priorities were presented to us in April and we, by, we didn't raise an objection. We didn't have a motion and all that. We did not raise an objection to those priorities that the CIP was subsequently built on.
And Park, I'll go ahead, Dale.
As I say, I, I appreciate the feedback on, on process and, you know, again, if you go back historically, the manager presented the CIP, the manager presented the budget and, um, council could amend it or, and there really wasn't much discussion about priorities or, um, um, you know, kind of that higher-level policy perspective. So, you know, this is only our second year putting a meeting in place to, to kind of have that discussion, which really is providing some direction or guidance to me of your thought process. But at the end of the day, I'm statutorily obligated to have to provide you a CIP and to provide you a, a budget that is balanced that, you know, that then you can modify or change. So, um, the, the, this, you know, where or how we codify, you know, what those principles are? Are they a separate adopted, you know, um, you know, action that a council? Or is it a discussion where you're essentially providing me feedback and I'm, you know, internalizing that when we put together, you know, the, the budget or CIP, we can work on that. And so, uh, I appreciate the feedback, sensitive to process issues. And, you know, we're looking, you know, we, we want to have a process where, you know, where you are able to provide that overview, that policy, that, that, that higher-level direction, uh, before we, you know, grind through the details and, and come back and present the statutory documents that you would send you, you know, will modify and, uh, and then ultimately approve. Are we out of this?
Yep.
All right. So we wanted to take just a couple of minutes or both to, to talk about an update on the, uh, the transit, the transfer center. A little bit about, you know, where we're at and, um, and, and I guess some thoughts or perspectives on, that we have on, where we might want to be going with it. Uh, so just as a little bit of background, um, you know, there was a study, it was completed last fall. It recommended that we go forward with an RFP that would have two sites, uh, the railroad parking lot and also the Schlegel Mill slot, and then other sites. The idea was that it was a, an RFP that, uh, that, uh, developers could come forward with. We were principally looking for proposals on one of those two sites, but we were open to any of the sites that were in the, uh, in the study. The transfer station had, there was, there was, I guess, envisioned or, uh, we, you know, visioned a facility that'd be about fifty thousand square feet. About forty percent of that was going to have a commercial space in it. There would be workforce housing. There would be a bus loading station. There would be space for the transfer itself and it would house about twelve buses. The, the idea was that this would be an integrated facility that would contribute, you know, to a vibrant downtown. It was very contingent on a Tiger grant, um, these transit, uh, investment generating, uh, uh, economy, something. And then, and then the, uh, so that's the Tiger grant. But they were, they were part of the, the reconstruction coming out of the, um, uh, the recession. And then it was also contingent about low-income housing tax credits, um, uh, to be, be in place. So that was what we, we envisioned. We talked about that in January. And, and so we went through a process. We went through an RFP process. We selected one developer. It was a developer called Gorman, um, and they were going to go forward talking about a proposal that hopefully would meet all of the, the grand things we had in mind when we envisioned at the Schlegel Mill slot. So in January, there was an exclusive right to negotiate with Gorman to go forward. Jay and I and staff have had several meetings with Gorman, uh, over the winter. And, um, um, so to the current status, um, as we've gone forward and had the discussions with the developer, the commercial space and mixed-use space is no longer there. The developer has said that in order for them to be able to qualify for, uh, the, the tax credits that they were looking for on the project, it would need to be only residential and in fact, a residential down to the ground floor. So it's, it's looking now like it's a residential project that is only on the first floor. There would be about sixty-five units that would be, uh, affordable through the tax credit process. But their ask of us, uh, to, to, to make this happen is that they would want the land for free and that they would need a hundred and fifty-four stall underground parking for about three point five million dollars. And although through some of the tax credits, uh, we would get about a million of that. But it, it would be a, about two and a half million dollar city expenditure, um, uh, for this, this parking that would be in addition to, to giving the land for a transfer center that has sixty-five units of affordable housing. Our concerns with that, so we've been talking about this as a staff, um, and we have some concerns. Quite frankly, uh, the easy thing to do would be just to continue down the path, um, that, that we were on. But we felt as a staff that we had an obligation to come back to you and just share with you that we have some concerns with where this project is going and then we have a, uh, I guess, some options for you to, to consider. So, uh, one of the concerns is that, uh, it's about two and a half million dollars of local money for sixty-five units of, of housing and, and the transfer center. There's no mixed use or commercial as part of the project. It's on the, what I think most people consider to be the wrong side of Farwell, uh, in terms of people, you know, having to move back and forth across Farwell. There's been some parking concerns that are raised by the area churches. At this point, there is no Tiger grant process in place. We had expected to see the Tiger grant application process, uh, uh, come forward this winter with applications due in April. At this point, there is, there's nothing on the horizon and we're not getting any word from the federal government that, uh, that the Tiger grant process is going to go forward. And, and there's a lot of talk about it not going forward in eighteen, but we may not even see a Tiger grant process in, in seventeen. And if you remember there, you know, we were, we were looking for five million dollars, uh, from the, from the Tiger grant process. Also, as we've been talking, there's some uncertainty in general about the federal government and their commitment to public transit. And you'll see that through this, this CIP, you know, we've relied very heavily on an eighty, roughly eighty percent of all of our transit expenditures being subsidized, uh, through the state and federal process. And, uh, that, 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 the, the security of that funding is, is becoming increasingly less known to us. And then there's also been the discussion about the local rail. So now, you know, coming into the mix is the possibility within a few years that, you know, we may have a rail service, uh, coming into Eau Claire. And, you know, and where do we want to be with that? And so from a concern perspective, from a staff perspective, we're saying, do we really want to be building something that has very little flexibility for the future, is on the Schlegel Mill slot, it's two and a half million? And there's these other uncertainties or possibilities that we have with local rail or even where, you know, the federal assistance is, is coming forward. So, um, we felt that it was important to at least bring these concerns to you as a council and to talk about maybe where we might want to go with this. So we have a proposal, uh, that we've been sitting and talking about. And that is to take a deeper dive and a look at the current transfer center site. And we've been talking with the, uh, the, the property owners that are in the, in the blocks that are north of the current site. And so basically, if you, if you look at that block and you take it forward, you know, really all the way down to, to the, to the Eau Claire River, you know, we, we look at that and we say, what are the possibilities for, you know, redevelopment in, in some of those properties? And you can think of some of the owners that are there. You look at the current uses of their properties and we see that there's some potential. So one of the possibilities is to look at the current site and say, what if we had commercial space that, that, or space that could be either the transfer center or commercial space right along Farwell? So it would, it would go right up against the, the back of Farwell. It would be the transfer center. But it would be built in such a way that if, say, rail came into place and we wanted to move this, you know, uh, facility, you know, to be more common to the rail, it could be converted to commercial or have some commercial there. It would have residential above. Now, one of the challenges with it is that it is, is, as Dave, as, as good as he is with draw, you know, his pencils and his markings, we still can only fit eight, you know, eight buses in there. So it, it wouldn't be the full, you know, twelve buses onsite. Um, there would have to be some, some work on the sides. But it's, but it's something that we think we might want to look at. Why consider this now? Um, you know, the, you know, why are, why are we talking about the current site? Cause we went through a study process that took us, you know, to the Sch- the Schlegel Mill lot. But previous studies have recommended the current site. There was a previous study about fifteen or twenty years ago that recommended the current site. And even in the study that was done last year in two thousand and sixteen, in the survey respondents, about fifty-four percent of the people who were surveyed preferred a site that was south of the river. Thirteen percent wanted the Canary and only twelve percent said that they wanted something, you know, north of, of, um, of the river. And, uh, the, you know, the two thousand and sixteen study that was done excluded the current site simply because of its size. And we recognize that size isn't, size is, you know, an issue as it, as it, you know, as we look at that particular site. But what we'd like to do, um, and, and so the rationale for looking at the current site or perhaps giving us an opportunity to look at that current site, um, really comes down to this rationale. One, you know, there is no Tiger grant application process, you know, in the works right now and we don't anticipate that there is going to be one coming. If you think about it, the Gibson start ramp is coming to the end of its useful life. So we need to talk about what we're going to be doing with that Gibson ramp and parking in the parking ramp. And so if we were to look at that three-block area, you know, part of what we might want to do with this is the future of, of the Gibson ramp. There's interest in the property owners, uh, that are in that three-block area north of the current lot for redevelopment. Affordable housing on the Schlegel Mill lot is still an option. Now, the developer has said that, that even without the transfer center, they would be interested in talking with us about, uh, putting affordable housing and doing an affordable housing project, uh, in our downtown. We feel that it's important to be talking about having future flexibility as it relates to the possible, uh, local rail, uh, options and, and what may be happening with that. And again, having flexibility in where we might need to be going with transit if the federal funding is not there long-term. federal funding is not there long term. So perhaps having something that is on the current site, that the space that the, that the, again, the space that the, that the transfer center is in has flexibility to be converted to a, a commercial later if, again, if we, if we, you know, if you say going forward, the rail has something up in the, in the, the north side of, of Galloway, up in there and, you know, if we're building a station and doing things with that, you know, just transit, you know, become part of that, it provides us the flexibility to at least have that conversation. So what's the ask? The ask is that we would be putting the Schlegel Mill slot development, you know, on hold for the summer essentially while staff works on current options. It's not to say tonight by any means or as part of the CIP process that you're picking one or the other, but just an acknowledgement that, that staff would be spending some time and energy looking at, you know, what we might be able to do with the current site. Because again, this, this current site and the idea of redevelopment of that three block area really was not part of the previous discussion. We don't, we're not looking to re-talk about the development process that took us to the Schlegel Mill lot for redevelopment as the transfer center site, but really to say, is there something in addition to or outside of what that process developed that might be worth talking about? So again, the decision point is, oops, I can't see, is to, is really to say, you know, do we want to have that discussion? The action for you, the way you'd be telling us about that is not through a nod, you know, necessarily here tonight, but when we adopt, right now, the CIP has the transfer center in 2017. The, if, if I get, I guess, a nod, you know, here tonight, what I'd be looking to do is put that in 2018 with the understanding that later this summer, we'd be having a discussion about, you know, whether or not we are able to come up with an, an alternative that we'd be willing or interested to recommend versus the path we're on now with the Schlegel Mill site. So I am looking for some feedback on whether this is something, when, when we come to the, the CIP that you, that you adopt here, you know, that we move that into 2018 or do we leave it in 2017? Again, the easy thing to do would be to just have said, here's the track, we're on it and, you know, and Gorman would do their thing and we'd be telling you that the grant's not here and, you know, we're waiting for the grant. We felt though strongly as a staff that, that there's perhaps some other creative options that bring some flexibility to the future with some of the unknowns that are there. And so I lay that before you tonight for your feedback and discussion.
Dale, just for clarification, so I fully understand, what Gorman is proposing is to just do the apartments and they want $2.5 million for the apartments, but we still got the cost of the transfer center to be paid for by the city or through the grant?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to clarify that, that they weren't saying $2.5, because you had transfer after and I was like, okay.
I was thinking that wasn't so right.
No, I was going to say, because that included the transfer center for $2.5 million, because even if we got the Tiger grant, we're going to have to pay 20% of it, that would have been a million and something, would have been almost there.
I, I.
Was it the, is it the 2017?
I think it's the 2018.
Yeah, I think it's the 2018.
Yeah, it's like the 18.
So it's there already, so.
Yeah, so I think the request to be from 18 to 19.
I, I like you guys thinking outside the box a little bit like that and maybe thinking of the future and different, different needs. What you're saying is potentially if we ever get a train station as well, it, it might be best to have a combination with the bus depot there.
Possibly. And if, and if we build this so that the, so that the space that the transfer center is in can be converted to commercial easily.
Right.
Then that leaves us that flexibility for going forward.
How, how does, how does this help us with the, the civic center parking ramp? That, that's hitting its, end of its useful life, you hit on that as well.
Because, and again, we, we want to work through that, but part of, part of, if you're talking about redeveloping, say, a two or three block area, could be parking part of that, so there'd be a new parking deck as part of that and perhaps, you know, it would be a phased way of having a new parking as Gibson comes to the end of its life.
Good idea.
There's a, there's a lot to talk about there, there's a lot to think about, it might not even be feasible in the end, but, you know, to, to your point, Bob, of, you know, trying to think about ways of, you know, getting to, moving, moving things forward with fewer dollars, we just thought, would you please come forward and see what your reaction is to that process?
Well, you know, basically, the Tiger grant looks somewhat dead at the moment. I don't think you have an option but to, to take your comments into consideration and do the analysis and then this fall, we can take another look at it because, and then maybe by then you'll have a better feeling if there is something happening at the federal level with grants being available. Because right now, you know, transit system without federal and state subsidies will be a horrendous problem for the city to fund.
In its current delivery method, yes.
Yes, as, as it sits. It's because we're getting the, the big hunk of our dollars from the state and federal and if that doesn't come through, we've got a huge decision to make on how we're going to fund it.
Or, or from our perspective, we need.
Or.
Flexibility in the way we've set this up so that we can adapt to whatever that future might be.
Yeah.
For my, my feedback, I served on the transfer site selection committee, I was very proud to be a part of, thank you very much. And, you know, I think if, if everybody had their way, we would have all the money and have all the solutions and have, be working on it. And that's not the way things work. So from my perspective, I think it's very wise to take a pause and to look at the options given kind of the forecast here. And what I, what I think about whatever this new transfer se- station is and wherever it may be, I think it's so important to keep it as close to the heart of our downtown to really not only serve people who already use it, also to incorporate new choice writers as one of the revenue, you know, increase and try and increase our, our revenue. So the closer we can bring it to the heartbeat, I think all the better. And, you know, my, my personal vision is, you know, nobody has to quantify this or do this, but I, I am so inspired by when I took public transportation when I lived in the Bay Area as a kid, and I remember getting off of the train when I'd go visit my dad for the weekend and I'd hop off and I'd smell fresh oranges and fresh everything bagels and you'd just smell the city and it was just so fun to be there. My job was to call my dad and say, I'm here. And I would, only an hour after I played by myself at, you know, 10, 11, 12 years old in Oakland. It was so wonderful. And so I would just love for people to come to our city and just smell it and smell something good and want to play and enjoy themselves and think, I love taking the bus, I love taking public transportation, this is great.
I, I would say one more thing too, on the Schlegel Mill slot, if, if we're moving a different direction potentially, then Gorman's no longer the only bidder, we, you put that back out for RFP?
Yeah, they have an exclusive option through the end of the year, but we're not required to do anything with them, so if we, if we did something.
For a transfer center site?
18?
The end of 17, the end of 17. I'm not even sure that it's, yeah, I think it is, I'd have to look back at it, council members rule. But regardless, once the end of 2017 comes, they no longer have an exclusive right to negotiate.
I'd like to add, you know, I, I'm really proud of this idea to postpone, as, as excited as, as I was to see this project move forward, I'm really happy that we're considering delaying it. You know, as we're looking to what is possible right now with our current plan, I'd be really disappointed to see, you know, as much as I want to see a new transfer center, I'd be disappointed to see these plans go forward as they are. It seems like, you know, as much as we need all of these things, the trans- transfer center and affordable housing, to collect them all in one place would do what I would really fear is to make a place just for people of low income and not for everybody that, you know, increases rent ownership and de-stigmatizes the tran- transfer, the transit system and such. And so, I mean, I'm glad, I would greatly support waiting and considering our options. I, I worry that investing in the current space with the intent to go somewhere else in the near future is maybe a waste of resources, depending on the cost, I have no idea. And I would also wonder if waiting for, to see what happens with rail could save us money and combining those two efforts at, at some point, if that's, you know, an interest that we have down, down the road, so.
Is there something that's actually feasible for downtown for rural?
Say it again.
Is there an actual site that could possibly work for rural and buses in the downtown?
It would be just north of the, just north of the down, downtown.
It'd be up in Galloway, back up behind Banbury basically.
What kind of cost?
Somewhere in there. It's where the tracks are.
Sure.
Where they tour down to a depot. Other feedback or thoughts? Again, you'll have time to think about it, there's no action tonight per se, but the feedback can be helpful as we come into what the final, when you adopt the CIP, that's going to be the, you know, the final direction.
And so, so presumably, when you bring the CIP for adoption, that dollar amount in 2018 would be different?
Yeah, or, or moved to 19.
Right.
Yeah, so basically, and what I, what I think I'm hearing here is that, I mean, I'll do that, but, you know, just know that that's there and we'll highlight it again that if, when, when it's adopted, that, you know, we're, we're going to have that conversation. You know, no promises, I mean, we, you know, we may look at all this and go, we can't get from here to there, but we're, we've got, we've got some people that have their bumwad paper out and a few pencils and they're sketching things up and we're talking to, you know, people to, to see what we might be able to come up with, so.
So.
Okay, so back to you, Jay.
With apologies, again, to senior staff and staff who's here, we didn't get to any of your.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.